That are in very, they're going through some unnecessary hardship. We ask you to provide this very much needed and basic service. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Moving forward, we'll hold the applause, please. Moving forward, the next on the list is Manuel Zamora.
Good afternoon, Judge, Commissioner Ramos. We're just here on behalf of Southwest Texas College Law Enforcement Academy. I understand we're Agenda Number 12, Item Number 12. But wanted to just give you our appreciation to begin with. We've been assisted by Maverick County for several years, allowing us to use the Maverick County Airport, the apron area for the driving training for the law enforcement academy. So we just wanted to show our appreciation, be present in case any commissioner or the judge had a question in regards to that specific training. And due to the instrumental relationship we have, we provide and graduate many, many peace officers that are serving with the sheriff's office, city police, tribal police, and the constable's office. So one of them being present here today that I just had, she's working for the district attorney's office. And another one that I saw as I was entering the facility taking an accident report in front of the building, but they both graduated in May. So very proud of them and want to know that. We are also starting a day program here in Eagle Pass, starting in February, which we already have 40 registered cadets that are Eagle Pass residents. The demand is there, they're proud to serve their community, and we're happy to host them and train the best product available. So Commissioner Ramos has been the point of contact due to the jurisdiction, but we know that it takes a whole commissioner's court to agree and be in favor to allow us to use the facility. So we're grateful, thank you for your partnership, and it's vital for the success of our program. Thank you so much. Judge, I do have a plaque here for the court. If I can approach and give it to the constable to provide to y'all, an appreciation of the many, many years of partnership that we've had. And also a patch for the rest of the commissioners, view and law enforcement view, and a patch is a token of appreciation. So may I approach, Judge?
Sure.
Thank you. On behalf of Southwest Texas College, thank you so much, Judge, Commissioner. As the one in contact always, thank you so much. Day meeting with the... Of course, yes, day unit, Ms. Ramos. Commissioner, thank you, sir. Thank you so much. Commissioner, thank you so much.
Thank you very much for being here today. We appreciate this.
Thank you.
We can get it behind him. We can proceed with the next on the Citizens Communication, Sandy Sessano.
Thank you, Judge Cantu and Commissioners. I'm here on behalf of the members of the Border Organization and one of the members, again, wasn't here, so they asked me to be there. So, and his message is that we are not opposed to the location, I'm sorry, one of the things that they're opposed to is the location of Puente Verde. The expedited process, the gaslighting of critical facts, the lack of transparency from elected leaders on this project is their concern. Everyone here is entitled to their voice of their opinion without concerns about attack or retribution. And he says, "And I'd like to take a moment to address HB 74, which failed to pass. Had it passed, the citizens of Maverick County and the city of Eagle Pass would be in serious trouble." Granting a private company the power of taxation, bond issues, an eminent domain alarming core governmental responsibilities to be transferred over to private property is very alarming. The lack of accountability and transparency is another concern. The conflict of interest, the erosion of the democratic principles, it should be by the people for the people, which is a lack of. And he also says, currently, there's two international bridges in the United States. One was in 1929 and the other one in 1966. And along there was some notable drawbacks, obstructions of security vulnerabilities, potential neglect, intangible and legal disputes. And it's come, and it comes to raise a lot of red flags of our native elected officials are advocating for security on behalf of Puente Verde. It is particularly concerning that current, that county is now associating with Congress, congressional representative that is currently indicted for fraud and embezzlement. And then it says, "Tell me who your friends are and I'll tell you who you are." And what else does he have? The infrastructure burden is an issue the residents of Maverick County, Eagle Pass, Texas, strongly oppose any efforts from the county to grant private corporation the authority to construct or operate international bridge crossings.
Ms. Sessano, you're at 3 minutes, 10 seconds, but I'm going to give you 30 more seconds to wrap up.
It's only one line of the rail line, so thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving on to the next Citizens Communication form, Luis Aranda.
Good afternoon, Judge, Commissioners, and members of our community. My name is Luis Aranda. For the reason I'm standing here today and why I will continue to stand before every leader who will listen is because I don't want to ever stand before you after a tragedy, asking why you didn't do more. I'm standing here before the moment because together we can make a difference now. I'm here to ask this court to consider adopting a non-binding resolution for transparency and accountability in our schools, the same resolution already presented to our city council. It doesn't change policy or cost descent, but it carries meaning. It shows that this community, at every level of leadership, stands united for one cause: student safety and transparency in Eagle Pass ISD. What happened at Serna Elementary should have been a wake-up call for all of us. The responding ISD officers own report labeled it a terroristic threat. Yet inconsistencies soon follow, with the district later telling state law enforcement agencies that no list of students ever existed, directly contradicting what was said publicly by administration. Those contradictions matter. They reveal a larger problem: a lack of clear, honest communication when it matters the most. And this isn't just about one day or one incident. It's part of a pattern, where too long communication between the district, parents, and local agencies has been inconsistent and unreliable. That kind of breakdown leaves everyone, from law enforcement to teachers to families, wondering if whenever a real emergency happens, it will be handled the right way. That uncertainty just creates confusion, it creates risk, and that risk should be concern of every single one of us. Speaking about this is necessary, as uncomfortable as it is for some to hear. Many in this community have told me that they're afraid to speak up or believe their voices won't make a difference. But I choose to be here because silence doesn't bring change. I stand for the children who depend on us to protect them. I stand for the teachers and staff who go to work every day expecting a safe environment. I stand for the parents who deserve the truth. And I will continue to stand regardless of what is said about me, because my daughters and every child in this district are worth it. And those who have supported this fight for transparency, I want to thank you. Your words of encouragement mean more than you know. They remind me that this effort is bigger than one person, and that real change begins when communities stand together. To the commissioners here today, I'm asking you to join every parent and community member who believes that transparency shouldn't feel like a challenge, it should never be treated as a threat. Adopting this resolution sends a message that the county will always stand on the side of truth, accountability, and safety for our children. Together, we can build a stronger, safer, and more transparent future for our schools and our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Aranda. We definitely, I think we did receive your resolution. Thank you so much. Moving forward, we have Ms... We'll hold it off, please, on the applause, just to make sure that we keep the courtroom decorum. Moving forward with Ms. Carol Martin.
Good afternoon. I'm, my name is Carol Martin, I'm with the Border Organization, I live in Camado. I'm here to request that the Maverick County Commissioners declare an emergency in the Camado community due to the ongoing water shortage affecting our homes. On behalf of my neighbors who have lived without running water for the past several months, we need immediate relief. Just a few months ago, we witnessed you, Judge Cantu, declare a state of emergency in Camado when flooding affected our community. Those who were affected by the flooding appreciated your efforts then, I'm sure, and we hope that you can similarly take quick emergency action to help those of us who have been desperate for access to clean, potable water. I also wish to recognize our precinct three commissioner, Ms. Olga Ramos, for meeting with Camado residents a few weeks ago when we expressed our urgent water needs, among other things. She is responsible for putting the installation of a water meter in Camado on today's agenda. Once again, I urge you to take immediate action and vote to approve this item today. I personally have noticed that the many improvements that Commissioner Ramos has made to our community, including the new Justice of the Peace Office Building, the remodeling of the June Edwards Community Center, and the Camado Public Library upgrades, to name a few. She has also agreed to pave some of our roads with chip seal as of today. Thank you for your assistance, ma'am. However, when I see county officials spending money on such large, expensive projects, I think to myself, surely the county can afford to spend a few thousand dollars on a water meter for Camado, or surely the county can pave my road or put up a street light, surely. But then when I'm told there's no money for that, it confuses me and it angers me, to be honest. You see, the average constituent doesn't understand how taxpayer money is spent. Most of us aren't knowledgeable about the labyrinthine pockets of monies that flow through the county's coffers, but we do instinctively know who we can trust. We know who really cares about us. We already know who is trying to meet our needs and make things happen for us. Today, we want you to demonstrate that you care for your constituents in Camado, that you won't just dismiss us by saying, "There's no money for that, we can't do it." We urge you, we challenge you to show us that we can trust you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Moving forward to the next on the Citizens Communication form, Enriqueta Diaz.
My name is Enriqueta Diaz, as you all are very well aware. I know that recently you all had a lot of problems getting your budget approved due to a lot of people requesting all kinds of things that the county doesn't have the money for. And you cut here and cut there, and you finally got it approved. However, in looking at the budget that you all approved, I noticed that most, if not all, the reserve constables are getting paid full-time with all benefits that the county offers deputies from the sheriff's office. You all have legal counsel, I believe he is the gentleman right here, under the Texas Local Government Code. Constables are elected and created under the statutes to assist law enforcement, which is the sheriff, and any other needs, and also for special duties that are impounded on them, so they can do it that the deputies don't have authority to do. However, the code is very clear that they are not full-time employees, and they are not whatsoever. The county commissioner's court is not authorized, it is illegal for you all to have approved them with full benefits, insurance, holidays, sick leave, like any other employees of the sheriff's department. Now, I'm here to give you a friendly reminder of what the statutes declare, and I am bringing this to your attorney, or in the presence of your attorney, so you can discuss this with him. There's a lot of money going out the window, you scratch my back and I will scratch yours. There's a lot of money in there that's being wasted illegally because the court does not allow it. It is not an employment office to hire friends and give them full-time jobs and fringe benefits at the stake of the taxpayers. Now, the constable positions were created to assist the community. However, it was not created to create different law enforcement agencies. The only ones that get paid full-time and benefits under the code are the elected constables. The rest of the reserve deputies or constables, or whatever name you want to call it, they are reserved, and they are to work only when there is an incident or crisis that they need extra law enforcement, and they can call them to activate their licenses. No other time should they get paid like employees working for the sheriff. Now, I'm bringing this to your attention because I do not believe that the community can stand another lawsuit because you all continue to violate the law. You have counsel, use it. And that's all I have to say. I hope you do something with this. I'll be waiting for your response this time goes on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving forward to the next individual with the Citizens Communication form, Ms. Maria Nepp.
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. I'm Maria Nepp, I live in Camado, and all I want to say is thank you for the streetlights. For years, we only had one streetlight in the corner of 277 and Abdallah Road. Years. Well, thank you, now we got four. And that's all I have to say.
Appreciate it, thank you so much, Ms. Nepp. Thank you all, and thank you to the citizens, of course, who participated in today's Citizens Communications forums, of course, or the participation portion of the meeting. We'll now move forward to three, Declaration of Conflict of Interest. Do any commissioners have any, or members of the court have any conflicts of interest on any of the items that are presented here on the agenda today? Being that there is none, then we'll go ahead and proceed. Moving forward to item number, consent items. Items number four through 19, I'll be removing from the agenda just for purposes of information. Items number five and 21 will be removed from the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion has been made by Commissioner Reese, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rios, discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Item number 20, regular. Discussion and appropriate action to accept, reject, and/or award electric provider bids presented by county's energy consultant, Marco A. Arredondo, Inc. Is there a motion to open the item? Motion has been made by Commissioner Reese, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rios, discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Item is so opened. Mr. Arredondo, you can please present to the court.
Judge, Commissioners, I'm Marco Arredondo, I think I spoke to you all earlier in June this year when we were talking about your energy prices and your contract being on month-to-month. We went out there and we requested for bids from your existing energy supplier, which is NG Resources and several other retail providers to try and get you the best favorable rate for what you all are doing at this time. And on October 3rd, when they came in, NG Resources, which is your current supplier, was actually the lowest quote bid at about 7.4 cents per kilowatt hour. They had 6.8 for 12 months, all the way to 7.4 for a 10-year contract, and kind of wanted to let you know where, and I know you've seen in the news, the State of the Union with respect to energy. At this time, in 2001, when your regulation first opened up, you could get energy at about 4 cents per kilowatt hour, all right? And then fast forward to about 2005 to 2008, it was at about 6 cents. You go to 2009, 10, 11, and 12, it went all the way to 14 cents per kilowatt hour. I think everybody, it's easy to forget those days when you were really hurt, but I mean, it's like, energy was just ridiculous. And then it came down to 2021, we got actually back down to 3.9 cents. So in 2001, when your regulation first opened up, if you could have signed a 20-year contract, you would have, you would have missed the 14 cents and the 9 cents and the 6 cents as that curve went up and came all the way back down. And we're doing real well, everybody's real happy, good times, kind of like the stock market right now, right? It looks good, but it's scary because whatever goes up, my wife always says, "Gotta come down," you know? But here with energy, we're now, the freeze came, and a lot of you saw that, and anybody that didn't have 100% full fixed contract, some cities saw 600,000, a million-dollar bill for those four days from that freeze, all right? I'm an ex-AEP engineer, employee, everything that I've ever done with energy contracts since 2001 have been fully fixed, so they're completely, no matter whether we freeze over or the power plants explode, your price will always stay the same with the contracts that we supply, all right? So I bring that up because these quotes that we have for you right now, they're fully 100% fixed. The one that you've been floating on for about a year with NG Resources, when your contract went out about a year ago, you were always susceptible that if there was a freeze or a hurricane or power disruption, you could have had a bill that was 20 cents per kilowatt hour, which would have been almost your entire annual budget for about a week. So these quotes that you have here up to 10 years are fully fixed, and what NG has actually come to, they're your current supplier, if you flip the page, these are the current quotes, because it's a commodity, it changes every day, the prices. The good news is, from October 3rd, when we opened up your bids to today, energy has actually, it hasn't gone down a whole bunch, but it didn't go up. It's because we're in the shoulder months of the winter, when it's not that hot, energy's not being taxed, very hard to grid, so it's actually about $3,000 a year cheaper the quotes that we got yesterday. NG is still the lowest quote. With them, they actually offered something that very few companies offer, they said that you, they would actually allow you to have a 20% add or delete of your current energy usage for the, for whatever term that you choose, whether you choose for five years, whether you choose for 10 years, they would allow you to keep at the same price, any additions up to 20% of your current load. That's important to you guys, when I, when I evaluated your accounts, you guys have more streetlights than any other county or city that I'm aware of, and that's good, you're taking care of your citizens, I hear it happening today, okay? You're constantly trying to keep everybody in the light instead of in the dark, okay? And so when you're, when I know that you're going to continue to increase that way, it's important that when we do do an energy contract, that we allow for that at the same price so that you don't come and each time you add another light, they're going to, it's going to come in at the current price, which could be a higher price, and it should be. The way things are going right now, we do not expect energy to go down for the next five to 10 years. That's because until we get more base fossil fuel power plants built in the state of Texas, we're down to about a 20% reserve, which is right for all of, all the bells and whistles start going off, because if you've heard the AI centers are coming in, they're almost trying to force them to do their own energy supply, whether it's nuclear or whatever they're putting in, because we do not have any power plants in the pipeline to be built. So as energy, as the energy reserve comes down, prices are going to continue to rise, all right? And I'll tell you, and I know Judge Cantu, the last time when I came on board, we had just signed a 10-year contract with Eagle Pass Water Works, we don't expect it to go down. And so we're trying to, I guess, stabilize your budget until more power plants are built. So there's two things that are going on in the state of Texas right now. We're running out of water, we're running out of energy, you know? And those are two things that we desperately need, and we got to secure. Southwest Texas College, which was here, has been one of my clients, right before the freeze hit, their commissioner said, "Marco, if the energy is down back to 4 cents per kilowatt like it was in 2001," this was in 2021, three months before the freeze, one of the commissioners said, I said, "Well," they said, "Well, you offered us five years, but there's 10 years here, so why aren't you recommending 10 years?" I said, "I told them, you guys never go up to 10 years." I said, "If I say 10 years, you're going to say, 'No, it's too far.'" So they said, "Well, if we could have avoided all this stuff," and they're at 4.2 cents through 2032. I would love to be able to tell you that we had that here. Their, their board said they want a 10-year contract, that they signed it, and they made me look really, really good, because in today's, Marco, when I tell you you got a 4 cent rate for 2032, you'd be happy as a dick. And I suspect that the new norm is going to be about 7 cents per kilowatt, that's where you sit. If we're five years into this game and somebody builds a power plant, we can always blend and extend the contract down, all right? What we don't want to do is be caught that we're saying 7 cents is too high right now, and then five years from now it's 12 cents, and we got to renew the contract. So I'm going to, I'm going to recommend that you all allow the county judge, and I'll give him these quotes, we'll update them because they change daily, we expect NG Resources to continue to be the, they're lower by almost 0.2 cents per kilowatt hour, which is about $7,000 to you than anybody else. They want your business, they have that 20% bandwidth, they're looking really, really good with them, and I feel that you should continue to go with them. So another thing that I looked at your accounts, because you have so many streetlights, your charges from AP are almost two or three times higher than any other county or city that I have. So I need to go in there, because I'm an ex-AEP engineer, my job working with the counties to find ways to save you money that are kind of outside the box, and you know, with all these new lighting programs, we're putting in new LED lights. So I need to go back to AP, look at all the lights you got, and I've got to look in their tariff codes and find out if we go to LED lights, are we going to save money on your AP charges? Because they're going to save you energy, but I need to put an analysis together for you guys. The energy contract's one thing, but those are the dollars that you can't do anything about with AP unless you go out there and you actually change something. And you have a lot of lights. And my friend at AP told me, said, "Marco, when you were in Maverick County, you got more lights than anybody else I know, and I thought you were auditing your account for this contract renewal." You have them, and I know why, because you keep on lighting up your citizens' street, and there's nothing wrong with that. I would love for everything to be lit up, you know? Just expensive, just got to find the best way to do it. And we just need to do a lot of research on you guys and see if there's more ways that we can save money. Going forward, if you do want lights, we will work with you on that. I'm an ex-AEP engineer, I do know lighting, so when you're working with your colonias and stuff's going on, I would be, my brother's here with me, he's an engineer as well, we're more than glad to go out there and look at it, work with your law enforcement, and see where you, where you need lights, and try and get the best light for that area instead of just saying, "We want a light." You know, we'll, we'll look at the right illumination, where we place it, how it's done. We're not going to say, "We're not going to do the light, okay, you're still the boss." If you want a light, we just want to coach you and see maybe if there's a better way.
I know that in regards to that, Mr. Arredondo, the issue with the lighting throughout the county, and that's something that obviously we've tried to do, what is an extensive audit on those, those lights, because a lot of them, well, a good portion, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say a majority, I'd say a good portion are out. And in order for them to get fixed, well, obviously, we need to go through reporting, we're working on that, getting that done, but even if they're not working, we're still paying, we're still paying for them.
Yes.
And that's, and that's the issue that, you know, I want to make sure is that we have that type of a situation resolved. I think transitioning to LED lighting is the best approach for us to do that, because now with the censoring and all that's going, it's a lot easier to handle that. So that's, that's an issue on the side.
And when the lights are out, the conversion is free. If you wanted it, $137.06 per light. So we want to take advantage of every time the light goes out, that we go in with a new LED light. a new LED light, and we don't get billed. So we're kind of sneaking in without, without any, any budget line items. And what our city manager at Mercedes has done with me and my other brother, who's down in the valley, is every time he's passing by our law enforcement, what they're doing is grabbing the GPS where the light is, and they're emailing it to us, and then we handle that process between AP and you guys and say, "This is the light that we need changed out and upgraded." Because it takes a team to do this. It's a nightmare. And I, I used to be the AP engineer, and we forced the contractors to go out there and number the streetlights, because we used to have maps, and they were physically drawn. So I knew where every light was back in the 80s and the 90s. And then when they went to AP Columbus, Ohio, everything's digitized. And, and I'll say this to the microphone, nobody knows where anything is. It's best guess, you know? So, but as we figure it out, we log it in, and it is going to be a lot of work. But the good news is if they're out, we can upgrade, hopefully lower our costs with AP, and there's no, no cost. And AP actually told me when they found out I was working for Maverick, they called me and said, "Great, you can help us." You know, because they don't have a lot of personnel either. Columbus, Ohio, not like the old days. Of course, you know, CPO is not like it used to be. They're trying to minimize, increase their profit. So it puts me back to work.
So, Ms. Arredondo, then, in reference to what has been presented to the court, there were a total of six companies that were looked at?
Total of six. NG came in real low. If you'd asked me, was NG a player last year? They, they tweaked their system. They used to be a half a cent higher than everybody else just last year, and they've actually lowered the rates, and we're very, very happy. We always like to see competition out there, right? We don't want everybody to be winning, winning. Shell is right behind them. That's why I would say we would make a motion that...